Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have a Coram Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. With all meetings, we'll go ahead and start today's out with a moment of silent prayer. If you'll bow your heads. Amen. Now please rise and join in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance for the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. Today is the first day of March already. Unbelievable. First, are there any additions to the agenda before council? Don't know, thank you. Okay, then the next is our consent agenda, which includes two items. One is approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was February 16th. The second is the approval of a fireworks sales permit for Shocker Fireworks. As you know, we allow up to four fireworks tents in Bel Air. This will be the second one, and we ask that a local not-for-profit be the sponsor, and the Bel Air 4-H Club is the sponsor for this tent if it were approved. So I would ask council to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. We have first and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes. Next is appropriations ordinance 16-05 in the amount of $326,049.87.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 16-05.
Second. And first and the second. Are there any questions or comments about appropriations ordinance 16-05? Here are none. Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And passes. Next, our city requested appearances. I have two forms, two notes that have been here to me. The first one is for Jeff Oldenettle. Would invite you to come to the podium if you would please state your...
That's under just citizens' concern.
City requested appearances. Did I jump ahead?
Yeah.
Never mind.
Sorry, Jeff.
Okay. That's what it says. You're right.
This is like if it's like your attorney or your... You can do it either.
Says city requested appearances.
Yeah, it's like if a city employee or a manager usually, but it's up to you.
You know, we've already caused nothing. I think this... Let's go ahead and Jeffrey spring it up. It's exciting. Request is speak form goes under request. Yeah. So if you state your name and your address.
My name's Jeff Oldenettle. It's 4420 Gunnison. And I was here two weeks ago when we, when we as a city voted on the approval of the renewal, we'll call it, with Sunrise for the use of the fields. And I was, I will tell you, I was concerned as the discussion went on. I was concerned in how it was going. I was very happy to, and I'm appreciative of the council members for voting in the way they did. I stand before you as a citizen of your city, our city. I stand here as a parent of a child, a couple of children that go to Sunrise. And I stand before you as a coach that coaches softball, as well as a coach that coaches with the City of Bel Air. My 10-year-old plays for the City of Bel Air, and my high school student plays for Sunrise. And so I use those fields in both aspects of it. I park in the school's parking lot, and I coach on the Bel Air's property. And then I park on Sunrise's parking lot, and I coach for Bel Air. And I was concerned as it went because I didn't want to, I didn't want to lose access either way. For me as a parent, and my, I think of my mom who has, struggles with walking long distances. It's better now than she was years ago, but, but that trek from the Bel Air proper parking lot all the way across to that far field was difficult when my now 16-year-old was younger. And obviously, we knew we could park over there, and so we always parked over there. But I saw that, and I was concerned, and I'm very appreciative. And that's really all I wanted to say was that I'm thankful that you voted the way you did, because I think it is, it's a benefit for both the school, and it is a benefit for the school, I can't deny that, but I think it's a benefit for the school, and it's a benefit for the city. I think it saves us both, and it benefits us both, because I use it both as a parent and as a, and as a coach for both sides. And so I just wanted to let you know that as a citizen and as a coach, I appreciate it both ways.
Thank you for coming. I have a second request to speak form. This is from Kelly Brewster. If you would, same thing, come to the podium, repeat your name, and give your address.
My name is Kelly Brewster. Address is 5504 East 49th North. And I'm coming to speak on behalf of the Sunrise, using the fields also. My son played baseball there for, from 2010 through 2013. And I know everyone thinks, you know, like, it's, you know, it's all financial, but at least when we were using the fields, it's, it's a, it's major convenience. I mean, because everyone knows in the springtime, when you're playing baseball, the sun's going down really fast, and you don't have time getting cars and go to find another field. It's just right outside their door. So they can just walk over there, and before the sun goes down, especially since there's no lights. So even just walking over there is a real short amount of time to get a practice in during the season, the season is getting ready to get started. Another thing was, our coaches are very, very considerate and conscientious. The players were told that after a game or after a practice was finished, to pick up all the trash, to replace any divots, and manicure the field, just like it was when we got there. And we did that every single practice and every single game. So, I mean, I, we just really appreciate the convenience of having the field there, and, you know, it's just a big, big plus for a small school like Sunrise. So, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for coming. Next is proclamation, and we have two of them this evening. The first one is Severe Weather Awareness Week, which is scheduled for March 14th through Councilmember Beck and I attended our community development meeting yesterday. We have our Spring Festival March 19th, so it's good to know that we can have, it goes through the 18th. We put in a request for good weather on the 19th. But let me go ahead and read this proclamation for Severe Weather Awareness Week. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas severe weather awareness week is March 14th through the 18th, 2016, and whereas Kansas has experienced more federally declared disasters in recent years than other state in the nation, and whereas each year brings the potential for violent weather to Kansas, and whereas large portions of our state, including the City of Bel Air, can be devastated by flooding, tornadoes, hail, windstorms, and other potentially dangerous events, whereas the Governor's Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA, have joined together urging all citizens to prepare for severe weather and to educate themselves on safety strategies. And whereas Governor Sam Brownback has declared the week of March 14th through the 18th as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Kansas, therefore, in official recognition of this statewide event, I David Austin, Mayor for the City, do hereby proclaim March 14th through the 18th, 2016 to be Severe Weather Awareness Week in Bel Air. A good reminder for all of us, we've had a very calm winter, and who knows what the spring will bring. And the next is American Red Cross, Red Cross Month is March 2016. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas in the City of Bel Air, the American Red Cross works tirelessly through its employees and thousands of volunteers to help when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and it also provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year and provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians. It collects and distributes about 40% of the nation's blood supply and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other life-saving skills every year. Whereas our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission, despite these challenging economic times, the American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Now therefore, I David Austin, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2016 as American Red Cross Month. So it'd be my honor to sign both of those after the meeting, so. And we'll move into citizens' concerns. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council, they may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move into reports. Got several things here today. And first of all, just want to welcome everyone who's watching at home and also in the classroom. I understand there's a few government classes that now watch our meetings, and that's exciting. Have a number of items I'd like to share with everyone at home this evening. First is a reminder to all of us in this room, the audience up here, to make sure that our cellphones are turned off at this time, if they're not already done so. Next, just want to let you know that for those of you that have been following the meeting, know that we have talked about adopting Bob rules of order for some time, and so hopefully tonight we'll kind of do a trial run, so I ask that you guys bear with us on that. Probably shouldn't see too many, if any, changes in that. Secondly, you've also heard me talking for a few weeks now on appointments to committees. I want to thank the citizens who have agreed to volunteer their time to serve our community in this capacity. You may hear the names of some of your neighbors and friends tonight, and I'd like to remind all citizens that there are many ways in which you can serve, and if any of you are interested in serving on a committee, please contact me here at City Hall. Speaking of committees, there are three new groups that I think we need, and I plan to kind of put in place. I've been able to have some individual conversations with some of the, with the council members up here, but based on our last meeting and direction from our last meeting, and it's interesting that we had two parents and coaches here today, I plan to form a Sunrise and Rec Center Use Agreement Committee. And I think that if we can have like Brian Hayes, our director, maybe a couple of council members, you know, Ramona Becker and Diane Nguyen, I think, to represent the city, the plan is to have a sit-down with both parties to hammer out an agreement that can be brought to council sooner rather than later. My thinking is this is something we can maybe do this summer, so therefore, it doesn't sneak up on council, and we can plan ahead for that. We also have an excellent marketing tool on the horizon, and that is the Bel Air History Book that you may have heard us talking about. What I'd like to do is I'd like to ask every council member up here to think of one representative that they would like to have on a committee that's going to kind of help shape and mold this history project. I think that way we, there's so many different groups out there, but if we could all think of somebody, not now, but you know, if we could bring that up at a future meeting, I think that might be something. So spend the next couple of weeks thinking of who that should be. And then this week, yesterday, I met with the Director of Marketing at the Catholic Care Center, and I asked her how we can be better connected. As you may recall, she was a guest at our last council meeting, and I'm pleased to announce that they have invited us to be a part of two resident community groups, and that Councilmember Betty Martin has agreed to be our representative on those committees. She'll need to get all the times and all that. Again, none of these are official appointments or anything, just things that I think we can all be involved in. The Catholic Care Center is an absolutely vital part of our community, and I look forward to this line of communication. I also want to thank our City Manager Ty Lasher and Tristan Tarifew, our marketing guru, for attending the proclamation reading there yesterday. Speaking of marketing, in addition to the history project, we continue to daily improve our reach, and our website is in the midst of continued improvements. Beginning shortly, you can see a list of the recipients of the Mayor's Care Recognitions. These individuals are going to be tagged through social media channels for more interaction, and that's just another way, I like to use that as another plug, to those of you listening at home and up here as well, that we as a council want to hear about citizens in our community who are doing, you know, acts of kindness that we can recognize up here as a body. So please, contact City Hall if you have a nominee. And finally, just a Spring Festival update, as I mentioned earlier. Councilmember Becker and I attended the Community Development Advisory Committee meeting last night, and this is going to be a fun, fun, fun event. Do you want to talk about that when we get to you? Or, okay, but it's a, I'm just going to say two words, bubble soccer. And with that, I did tell Tristan that I would let those at home in here again, if you'd like to volunteer. Volunteer time starts at 11 o'clock, and I have this beautiful sheet that I brought home last night. I wanted to have my cat knock a glass of water over it earlier today, but we can still take volunteered for that. So that's the end of my report, and with that, we'll move into committee, or to council member reports, so we'll start with Ms. Martin.
Sorry, Mayor, I don't have a report tonight.
No problem. All right. Councilmember Nguyen.
I do have a report tonight. I recently attended a meeting with a lot of other north-enders. That includes Park City, Ketchikan, outlying areas, kind of thing. I think I was the only one there from Bel Air exactly, but the speaker at that meeting was an engineer from PEC, which is the engineering firm on the North Junction. And so he spoke on the four phases of that. They are planning that with numbers, traffic numbers to 2050, which...
What?
Yeah. Which really sort of gives your heart a little bit of stoppage when, when you think how...
We'll be there by then.
I know. I know, that's what I said too, but, but... And it could be on the North Junction. Yeah. So, because it's so dangerous now and what have you, and so I would urge all of you who are listening, you know, at home, or if you're interested at all on this, there is a fact sheet, and it's actually on the KDOT website, but you can also Google "North Junction Project", and it will come up, which is easier. And it is a map, and it's colored into the four different phases. The last two phases do not have any funding whatsoever, not even listed yet, which is pretty scary too, with the state budget the way it is. But it is an interesting map I brought for the council members, if you'd like to each take one, and I know that's not going to show for anybody, but again, just Google Wichita North Junction Project, and that map will come up. So it was a fascinating meeting because all of the people there are affected by it, and part of the conversation was about how it's going to affect the 45th and Hillside intersection as well, because if you think about 45th Street, it's kind of a street to nowhere on this side of town. And that's a huge, probably a huge mistake that some engineer made years and years ago, but they don't like to hear about their mistakes, so. But nothing had been done on that, and so it wouldn't be in the first two phases anyway, so maybe there's time for some of that to come into play. So I don't know if you can get excited about road projects or not, but I did get kind of excited at that meeting about the fact that it could change some things for Bel Air and for this area as a whole. So, anyway, easy enough for that. The next thing is much shorter and what have you, but very interesting. Tomorrow at noon, the chamber will meet here in the community room, and the speaker will be Chuck Clannahan with Homeland Security. I've heard Chuck speak several times. He's very knowledgeable on a number of things, security obviously, and, but his topic tomorrow is very appropriate. It is on active shooter in your business, in your home. So I urge everyone to come. I hope that won't throw Tristan into a flip because, you know, for lunch, but we'll make do somehow if too many people show up. I think it's important, and it's very timely, considering what happened to the workplace nearby, so that's all.
Bless him a week ago.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor. And do you think, should we call? I think that we would have a couple of people that would want to attend from school. We're just going over that.
Sure, just call.
Okay.
And let her know.
Noon, perfect. Okay. Well, happy Super Tuesday. And we're all probably anxious to see the news tonight, but I wanted to just go from your proclamation, Mayor, from the American Red Cross Month, and let you know my National Honor Society is actually hosting a blood drive on March 29th to coincide with this, and we, this time, have opened it up to the public. The last four years, it's just kind of been students and parents of the school, but this time, the Red Cross has asked us to try to do a bigger campaign, and so it is from 9:00 to 1:00 on that day, and if anybody would like to give, they can just call City Hall or email me on my address or something. So I thought that was very fitting to announce since it's open and it's our month. And...
Is it here at City Hall?
Nope, it's going to be at Sunrise. They're going to have the blood mobile, but they could call here at City Hall and leave me a message, or they could email me with my Bel Air email, and my, I think my contact information's all on the website, but I didn't want to invite, since it's going to be a big campaign this time, and it fits in with the drive. And I did want to say on last Thursday, the CCUA met, and we had a good meeting. We visited about our manager, Randall Harris, has done a great job with his performance and very deserving of the raise we gave him that he hadn't had in a long time. Where now though, I want to tell the public in the Park City Library, someone asked me the other day, we no longer meet here. It is there at the library on the fourth Thursday at 4:30. It is open to the public. If you are interested in our water and sewer, that's always probably the question people ask, why is it so much? And they can learn, but things are going well. But one of the things that Randall did say is, he was thinking there's some new council members probably that have not had a tour of the treatment plant, and he wanted to maybe set up a time. We did that, I know when I first came on, and maybe we all could meet and just go over there. It takes about an hour. We could publish it, so we wouldn't be in trouble, but I did want to tell you, he asked if you guys would like to do that. He would love to show that to the members and people who are newer and older elected. And I will not be able to attend the SCAC meeting, March 12th. I have a national qualifiers for forensics, so I don't know if anybody else can go.
Do you know where it is this year?
It is going to be downtown, I believe, isn't it, in March? They gave it to us a few months ago. Okay. I'm pretty sure it's downtown. I think it's Cowtown. We can look that up. And then I just, I wanted to thank the gentleman who came and spoke tonight. As a council member, we all, as council members, represent everyone, and even though I work at Sunrise, I had several people comment to me that they were a little frustrated that it seemed like that the voice wasn't being heard, so I do appreciate you guys coming. I think it's very interesting that every one of our coaches that are coaching this spring live in Bel Air. And so for us to say, you know, sometimes, well, we're representing people that don't live here, the softball and baseball coaches all live here, and I think that's interesting. Most of them moved here like I did because of the school, and I think that it's an important thing that Northeast Magnet, Resurrections, Sunrise, and all the other schools and businesses, all of them be very well represented. They all play a vital role in our community. Without it, without the businesses and the citizens and all of it, we wouldn't be who we are. And as taxpayers, everyone should have a voice, so I just wanted to thank you guys that spoke tonight. And just a shout-out, Saturday was a really big day. Both the girls and boys basketball teams, I told them I'd say, at our school won state, and my mock trial team, for the first time in years, we won first place too, so we're heading to Topeka at the end of the month. So it was a big day for us at school. So with that, Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilwoman McDonald.
Relative to Councilwoman O'Donnell's comments, I would like to have a tour of that plant.
Good.
In addition to that, I would like to see our wells. I'd like to see our sewer, see where our sewer lines are and where our water lines are. I'd like to, I think that's important information for council members to have.
That's great.
And relative to Councilwoman Diane Nguyen's comments, WAMPO, Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, has a 2040 plan, and that's not funded to 2040. We get funds from the federal government, usually through the state, through KDOT, and then it comes down to Wichita, or Bel Air, or Mays, or whatever the city is. So I'm not surprised at 20, at 2050, and I'm not surprised that there's a lack of funding for it right now. In addition to that, I attended a tree board meeting, and they are in need of a new member. And so I might say a few words about the tree board, because a lot of people do not know what the tree board does. And if you're interested in gardening, or if you're a master gardener, you'd be a great candidate for, to be a tree board member. But we do, we plant trees, obviously. We have a program where we go down to the Murrow Building in Oklahoma City, and on April 19th, we don't do it every year, because we don't have to, but we do it frequently. And at that time, if you're in attendance at that meeting, and it's a meeting of all the survivors and their relatives, and they speak to the audiences who are there, and they give out seedlings from Survivor Tree, that they pick the seeds up from this big natural Native American elm, and they plant them in nurseries, and they grow them, and they hand them out, and then we here in Bel Air grow them, and we hand them out, we donate them to cities that have been hit by a catastrophe, or individuals who have suffered through a catastrophe and have survived. It's a good organization, and we work well together. So I'll end my comments there. Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I'd like to say, yeah, the tree board, Mr. Valen Doot, it does so much for the city... I'd like to say, yeah, the tree board, Mr. Valen Doot, it does so much for the city. We're a Tree City USA for, what, two decades now? This Survivor Tree is, I've been to some of the ceremonies, they're very moving and it's just, I think we shall be very proud of our tree board, so thank you for that. Councilmember Becker?
Well, following up on that comment about needing another volunteer on the tree board, I would just like to say, you know, it's really fun to volunteer. I have been a volunteer most of my life, even when I was still a child, I volunteered for things. And I've met some of the most wonderful people that way and developed some of the very best friendships in my life. And I just want to encourage everybody out there, you are welcome to volunteer and you will find it's just a wonderful experience. We had a pretty good time last night at our meeting for the Community Advisory Council and planning the Easter egg hunt for the kids and the people here in the city. It's just fun to get together and do those things and share. And it's fun to go out on the day of the event, it's fun to plan it. And I really want to encourage people to get involved in doing this type of thing because if you don't, you're really missing out. It builds community, you get to know your neighbors, you get to know other people in the city, and it's just a wonderful thing to do. And that tree board seems to be another great group of volunteers. They, all of our committees are like that. So pick out the one you'd like to work on or maybe a couple of them and just get in there and do it. The mayor kind of gave away the latest thing that we're going to be doing for the Easter egg hunt, and that's going to be on Saturday, March 19th, as he mentioned. So put that on your calendar. And we've got a lot of good food that's going to be there this year again, and some new people that haven't been there before. We're going to have face painting, kite flying, the Easter bunny's going to be there for everybody to see, and a bouncy house again. And the big thing that's different this year is going to be the bubble soccer. Now, if you have not seen that before and don't know what that is, just Google that and you will get a look at it because it is really, it just looks like so much fun. And I think it's going to be fun, not only for the people doing it, but for the people watching, too. So we're going to have that going on all day. And again, that will be Saturday, March 19th. So everybody should try to get out to join us for that. Now, the other thing I want to say is I do appreciate you guys coming tonight and speaking about Sunrise. And I want to emphasize that I don't think anybody on this council wants to take those fields away from Sunrise because we know that's very valuable. And you speaking about how much it means to you and other people I'm sure that you're speaking for that didn't come out tonight, that kind of emphasizes my feeling about it. It's valuable. It's very valuable. And when things are valuable, we pay for them. That's my only contention about this is that I do think the city should be paid for the use of the fields. So we want everybody to have access, be able to use them, but the, we have to look at things in a businesslike manner, and that's what we need to do. We need to set a value. And we all pay for things that we value. That's just part of the society we live in. So I'm glad you came, we like to hear from you. And we're so lucky to have that wonderful asset of the recreation center over there for all of our citizens in the whole city. So thank you very much. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Then I'll just say real quick, back to the Easter egg hunt, there's over 10,000 eggs that are going to be there. And the Easter egg hunt starts at two, and the Bel Air seniors are going to have a line dancing contest, so bubble soccer's not your cup of tea when you get out at 12:45. But with that, let's move to city manager.
Before you move to city manager, neither one of you mentioned the time for the 19th.
Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry, 12 to four, if I'm not mistaken.
It's not on the flyer. I was looking for that and I'm glad you mentioned it, but I, I think I've got to be there at 11 o'clock to help set up, so...
Yeah, it's 12 to four.
12 to four, okay.
Well, just so they know at home.
Right, it's not going to be all day, it's going to be in the afternoon.
Do you know what time the egg hunt starts?
Two o'clock.
And you can come with your appetite at 12 o'clock because there'll be lots of food to eat there, so.
I think we have like five different food trucks and two icy thingies that have set up, so.
Right, we're hoping for a warm day.
And nintens is free, but food is not free.
Exactly, exactly. Bring your pocketbook and your appetite. The Easter eggs are going to be filled with candy for the kids, that's all free. But for adults and, you know, lunch, we got to pay for it.
And we also, nothing to, in the province of Kansas, is we're going to have a container after the Easter egg hunt for the parents that don't want to take all the plastic eggs home. We're going to have a place where they can be recycled so we can reuse them the next year. I thought that was real important because so many of those get thrown away in landfills on that side. All right, if there's nothing else, let's go down to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind, or let the citizens know at home that starting the week of March 7th, it's probably going to take a month, contractors from the utility metering system will be performing some warranty upgrades on water meters throughout our water system. So if a citizen's meter is slated to be upgraded, we'll let the contractor will knock on the door to let people know that they're there, that they're going to be doing it. If no one's at home, then they'll leave a door hanger that just states that they were there. We had some issues with the installation last time and we don't want to repeat that. So I think they're working from like eight to four, so hopefully they'll miss people. But they are going to notify anybody at home that they'll have the water off for, it only takes about 10 minutes to change those out. So anyway, and we're going to be putting that out on Facebook and Twitter and those types of things to let citizens know. But like I said, it'll take about a month to complete that. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. First thing before council is consideration of approving the utility and drainage easement on the city-owned Lot 7, Block B, the Aurora Park Edition. This, the reconstruction of 37th Street is going to start this summer, so certain additional easements are being required for the expansion. Looking forward to seeing that redone. Bel Air actually owns Lot 7, Block B, which is where the, the reason why we own is because of the lift station, you can see that up on the screen. They need an additional 20 feet from this lot for drainage purposes there along 37th Street. So basically, we're asking council to do is so that the city can grant that easement back to the city since we own it. You know, just making it all official that we can do the construction on our own property. So before council this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve the utility and drainage easement on Lot 7, Block B of Aurora Park Edition.
Second.
And the first and second, are there any questions or comments beside them? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's exciting. I actually drove down 37th and you can see the pipe actually laying out there. I mean, it's getting ready. It's, I know a lot of us have forgotten this point at this time last year, but it's happening now, so. Next item is consideration of approving the revised governing body vacancy policy. Again, those of you at home know, we've been talking about this for quite a while. What happened is with the, when the state changed their law and rules and when we had the resignation of a council member, council wanted to update this policy. It was tabled from our last meeting due to concerns that were raised by Councilmember O'Donnell. And I know she's since asked me to put it back because she was able to watch that workshop. And I mentioned she was comfortable approving it, so that's why it is back on for your consideration this evening. So let's see if you had anything else to add or make sure council's ready to move forward with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to say, after I watched, it took me two times to catch it all, but I did get to see the entire workshop. It made sense, exactly what the other members were saying. And I agree that that is the way it probably should be. After I watched it, it really helped clarify. So I'm sorry that I caused a lot of extra discussion. I wish I'd seen it before. But I would agree now with all of you, the way that it's worded, that that's the way it should be. So if everyone's comfortable with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the governing body vacancy policy as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments?
I'd like to say I think we made some good changes, you know, just had to tweak it here and there, but it really improved the policy. So I think we all did the right thing.
Yes.
Took her time, got it, so, yeah, it's worked out. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, okay. Next is, let's see, are the, you'll notice there's several individual appointments on the agenda tonight. These are named and contact information I gave you guys three weeks ago, so hopefully you've had enough time to consider. State statute says that appointments must be made individually, which is why they're on here individually. And again, just for everybody at home, and you heard Councilmember Becker talk about, the Councilmember McDonald talk about the different committees and volunteering, that these are citizens who volunteer in committees and thank them for agreeing to serve in these capacities.
Mr. Mayor, would you like us to do these individually or list them for the public to hear and do them all as one?
You can't do them as one.
We have to do them individually, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so...
Did you just say that? And I didn't hear that?
It's okay.
I'm sorry, I've been at Model United Nations for two days and all I've heard is, we're solving the world's problems, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're just fine, yeah. So just so you know, yeah, the...
We have to do them separately.
You have to do them individually. And so, you know, my first appointment, and again, these are additional names. You may notice this committee lost a number of members this summer, kind of through transition. We still have our core base there. So I know that Councilmember Nguyen has served on that committee, Councilmember Becker served on that committee, I've served on that committee. And again, all open to the public and everyone's welcome. But my first appointment that I'd like to make is Chris Jones. And she's a parent here and a, is a, she's got a whole bunch of letters behind her name, but basically a psychiatry, does a lot of lectures across the state, and works at KU School of Medicine. That's my first appointment and I hope we can approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say that I don't know her, which is just amazing because I know her husband very well. I've worked with him a number of years on our Neighborhood Association Board. And so I'm just amazed I don't know her because she lives right in my apartment, my neighborhood. But I wanted to say that one of my neighbors who does know her gave a very high recommendation. And so that makes me feel real good about her.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the appointment of Chris Jones to the Community Development Committee.
Second.
And first and second, are there any questions or comments on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Joe Woodward. This is a young man. He and his wife, he grew up in Bel Air and went to WSU, got married and moved, stayed in Bel Air in his own home. Actually, I think he lives in your neighborhood whenever I...
He is now two doors down from the excellent, oh, man, he works at Coke.
He works at Coke Industries in college recruiting. So, and again, before this, as we go through, I hope you'll see a well-diverse list of names and ages and occupations, which is what we're going for on that. So again, my next appointment is Joe Woodward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the appointment of Joe Woodward to the Community Development Committee.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, my next appointment is Jeff Hawes. I will make full disclosure, he is one of my neighbors. He actually served, volunteered at the home show and has had an interest a long time, but he used to work a third shift job and it was real difficult. He is now a mortgage lender. His wife is a real estate agent with the Gerbic team, Gerbic. They have two teenage children that attend Circle High School. If you've gotten a pizza at Bob and Luigi's in last year, there's a very good chance it was his daughter who made it for you. So that is my next appointment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the appointment of Jeff Hawes to the Community Development Committee.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We just have three more here. Next is consideration of Benjamin Welburn. This, he's a young man. Actually, Councilmember Martine is the one who spoke with him at the Christmas Open House. They are fairly new to Bel Air. They've been here just under a year, relocated from Northern California when his wife took a management position at, oh, boy, I think Cargill.
Cargill.
Was it Cargill? Thank you, thank you for that. He now works in foster care recruitment, I believe with St. Francis. So, and indicated willingness to, you know, Councilmember Martine almost right away that, hey, I want to be involved, I'm going to get, and he does have a background as a youth pastor at a kind of a mainstream, I can't remember the exact denomination, but like a Presbyterian or Methodist, something kind of mainstream out there. I would ask council to approve him.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Benjamin Welburn to the Community Development Committee.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is Brian Turner. Brian Turner moved here from Emporia. He graduated from Wichita State University about, I think, four or five years ago. Married, he and his wife have a young baby. And I want to talk about a guy that's connected. He is the assistant general manager with the Wichita Wingnuts. Prior to that, he worked for the Wichita Wild and did a lot with player recruitment and so is well-connected with a lot of the schools, knows a lot of people, and is, was very willing to join as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will make a motion to confirm the appointment of Brian Turner to the Community Development Committee.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel as well as a contract that the city is considering.
No, how long?
Pardon me?
How long?
Oh, thirty minutes.
Second.
Okay, before, just because we want to get through the, we're in the middle of an agenda item. I would ask that maybe council table this. And then, we do have an executive session at the end of the meeting, we can certainly do it. It's been first and second, but just so that we procedurally get through the agenda item. We can always come back to it if need be. But I would ask, before we entertain Councilmember McDonald's motion, that we would take action, even if it is just to simply table item H. And we don't have to say that out loud, then, if you're not comfortable.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I needed the immediate executive session.
Okay, well, according to Bob's rules, we've got to get through the agenda item first, before we can, because we're in the middle of an agenda item, and we want to stay. Is that, or since we're doing these individually, am I, am I mistaken?
I don't think so, because we're in a, these are individual items.
No, I'm not familiar with Bob's rules yet, so I can't advise you on that.
Okay, I mean, I guess since they are individually.
Well.
Is that what?
If you're wish-mayors to finish, I'll just make a motion to go ahead and confirm the appointment on this one.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, sorry.
She's got a motion.
Hold up. We have a motion at first and a second. Wanted to make sure, it sounds like we are.
I think because these are listed alphabetical, and you're doing them individual, you can stop at any time and do the executive session.
I just wanted to make sure that we're following procedure, guys. I'm not trying to rough anything, but there is a motion on the floor for a thirty-minute executive session, which I would say, I actually was going to ask for about a five-minute executive session as well. At the end of the meeting, mine was for non-elected personnel. So if we could bring them together, I'd like to invite the city manager in for a portion. What's yours?
The city manager and the city attorney are invited in to this executive session.
For thirty minutes, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we are in the executive session. We are in recess beginning at seven fifty-three.
We've had an executive session. No binding action was taken. I'll call the meeting back to order. I'd just like to point out, our city clerk did not have to come back and get us.
I like that.
So like I said, I'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting. First item, to continue on with our packet, we are at agenda item H.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we table item H.
Second.
Are any, there's a first and second, are there any questions or comments?
For what length of time do we table?
One to two meetings, so.
Well, it's gotta be within forty-five days, right?
Yeah, so by the end of early April.
Table it for forty-five days, I think. Okay. Is that, I want to speak for the.
Forty-five.
That's fine.
The Go State Statute, is that right? We all good?
Perfect.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is regional economic area partnership appointments. It seems we're talking all about committees and appointments tonight. But this is a good thing that we're well represented. Because we are, they can call us the city the second class, but we're here. We maintain one voting delegate for various REAP committees. Tonight, I'd like to appoint Councilmember Guy McDonald as the voting delegate and Betty Martin as the alternate voting delegate to the REAP Board of Directors. Ask council to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to appoint Guy McDonald as the voting delegate and Betty Martin as the alternate voting delegate to the REAP Board of Directors.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments?
How long does this appointment run for?
I believe two years. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, committee for you, Ms. Martin. And then next is consideration of appointing voting delegate, an alternative voting delegate to the REAP Legislative Committee. And my appointment recommendation for that is that we put Councilmember Ramona Becker as the voting delegate and Councilmember Diane Nguyen as the alternate.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna go.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ramona Becker as the voting delegate and Diane Nguyen as the alternate voting delegate to the REAP Legislative Committee.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Final item for council is consideration in approving an IRB administrative cost agreement for origination in administrative fees. This is for Phase One and Two of the Next Level Hoops. Just to let those watching at home, just some background information. The city assesses an origination fee whenever we issue this bond. And then an administrative fee is paid annually to cover the record-keeping cost to the city. Typically, the business adds this origination fee to the loan on the IRB and the city has reimbursed their closing. As Next Level Hoops has never issued an IRB before. Remember again, they're young and brand-new and doing wonderful things, I'll just say. But they didn't quite grasp, understand this needed to be part of their financing. Therefore, that fee was not included. So rather than having them pay cash for the origination fee of both One and Two, they've asked for this payment plan over the length. So city's still getting what's due. Next Level Hoops is still paying what they owe. And our staff, our attorney and staff kind of worked this out. They're comfortable with this plan and allowing them to pay over time. And just want to point out, this was not a revenue that we projected as origination fees are only charged when IRB is issued. So hopefully that answers some questions there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the IRB administrative cost agreement for fees associated with Phase One and Two of the Next Level Hoops IRBs and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is future discussion and future issues. We have a workshop scheduled, continuing with our regularly scheduled, the second Tuesday of each month at 6:30. The, so far for the agenda, what we'll look at are the RFPs for trash and recycling services. I think our city manager told us that was coming due. And so looking at all of those. Is there anything else that we would need to add?